She's a Paducah Tillman High School freshman.
I'm reading tonight from Psalms 84, "How amiable are thy tabernacles, O Lord, our God of hosts! Our soul longeth, yea even fainteth for the courts of the Lord; my soul and my flesh crieth out for the living God. Blessed are they that dwell in thy house; they will still be praising thee. Blessed is the man whose strength is in thee, and whose heart are the ways of them. Behold, O God, our shield, and look upon the face of thine anointed; for a day in thy courts is better than a thousand. I'd rather be a doorkeeper in the house of my God than to dwell in the tents of wickedness. For the Lord God is a sun and shield; the Lord will give grace and glory; no good thing will he withhold from them that walk uprightly." Let us pray together. Gracious and eternal God, I humbly come before you this afternoon to thank you for your wisdom and the understanding that you provide for all of those who will call upon you. I call upon you now for this Board of Commissioners who are charged by the people of this community to represent them in decisions for the blessing and growth of this community. May they deliberate this evening with clear minds, unified hearts, and godly integrity in the matters that are before them. Grant them knowledge beyond the scope of their ability. May they rest in this room the presence of the Holy Spirit to guide and direct their thoughts and actions. Prosper the city of Paducah in these days when it seems that there's never enough to go around. May these Commissioners and this Mayor be guided by the supernatural wisdom and understanding that is readily granted to those who ask. Blessed as it were our loaves and fishes, we trust in you, Lord, to show us the path that we should follow in this meeting tonight for good success. Let us remain faithful to our responsibility to act in a manner that will benefit the citizens of this community. Protect our police and our fire departments in their service to this city, and most of all, may we be granted the peace that passes all understanding. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Caroline. I hear you're a good soccer player, too? Thank you for coming. Okay, we have some presentations tonight. We have a Veterans Day Parade. The Veterans Day Committee is here tonight. Welcome.
My name's Gene Edwards. I'm chairman of the Veterans Day Parade Committee, and we want to thank you for the opportunity for us to come and express our thanks to the city of Paducah and the surrounding area for the support that you give the veterans on Veterans Day. Our committee is made up of members from all the veterans organization, the DAV, Parks and Services of the City of Paducah, and especially, we want to thank Mark Thompson and his staff, and especially Amy Clark and Marilyn Gentry for their support. It's unusual to be on a committee when someone else does all the work. Basically, what happens here is that Mark and his staff, we just approve of what they... The activities of the Veterans Day Parade starts this Thursday with a special reception for the honored veterans, and it'll be from 11:00 to 1:00 at Walker Hall, and we definitely want to invite you all to come.
Thank you.
And then on Veterans Day, Monday Veterans Day itself, the activities will start at 10:30 in the morning, and there will be, of course, the introduction of the honored veterans. And this year, we have a new award that was brought to the committee as a suggestion that we have an award to a non-veteran that does support and does above the call of duty for supporting the veteran. So, we're going to call that the Patrick Award, and that will be announced right before the parade. And the DAR essays winners will be announced, and I'm going to ask Cheryl to come up and tell you about the essays.
Mayor and Commissioners, this year, we have a total of 827 entries in the essay and picture contest. It ran from kindergarten through second, did a picture, and the grades three through 12 wrote an essay this year. And we just wanted to show you a couple of little pictures. We thought you might... These are not the winners. The winners are at Parks and Recreation right now, and all the winners have been notified. But we have a picture here of the elderly house that the kids drew, which we thought was awfully cute, and also of the kids. It's about helping, veterans helping others. So, we just wanted to show you those. And Mayor, this year, when we do the awards, we thought it was such a wonderful thing when you walked up last year, and you were helping us to present, so that we would like you to come and present the award as we read the names off. If it's possible, to hand them their check or their book, along with their beautiful red, white, and blue ribbons.
I'd be glad to be there.
That would be wonderful. I think it'd be a wonderful photo opportunity for the children, and I think it's going to make that day much more memorable for all of them. But we'd like all of you to come out. It's a great time, and the kids are really, really good, and they will be writing on the floats.
Good. I know that a lot of the schools have children down for the Veterans Day Parade, and they always enjoy that so much.
Any other member like to say, make a comment? Well, the parade will start.
How many of your committee members do you have here tonight?
Tonight? One, two.
Well, thank you all for helping with this. So, you've got some good helpers there.
We got some tremendous helpers. The parade will be at 11:00, and we have 36 entries in two bands. So, if you'll excuse us, we have a meeting, a committee meeting tonight, and we appreciate your time, and again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Our second presentation tonight, you know, I appointed Mayor's Anti-Bullying Task Force, and we have one of our officers that's on the Mayor's Anti-Bullying Task Force, and then we have one of the sheriff's deputies that's also on that task force. So, tonight, we have Officer Gretchen Morgan here, and I asked her to talk to us a little bit about what they do as a police department to help with bullying in our schools and our communities. So, welcome, Gretchen.
Thanks, thanks for having me. I'm Gretchen Morgan, and the Police Department has seen a need to address bullying in the schools, and there's a lot of information out there that's targeted for elementary-age students. And so, when I got to looking, I realized that there wasn't a whole lot out there for high school and middle school age that directly focused on them. So, I developed a PowerPoint presentation, kind of specifically for that age group. And basically, the information in the presentation is very simple. It's basic knowledge that everybody already knows, but a lot of times, we just need those simple reminders to make us aware of the situation. I addressed the golden rule, treat everyone the way you want to be treated, and I show a couple of videos from the movie Forrest Gump. I think that demonstrates bullying kind of in its simplest form. One is where they throw rocks at him and hit him when he's trying to get away, and then the other is the scene from the school bus, when no one will allow him to sit with them. So, I show that. I also have a couple of scenarios that I give the students to let them decide whether that situation is actually bullying or not bullying. Gets a little dialogue going. And then I talk about a student that's not local. It was, I believe she was from Washington, where she was bullied, started in elementary school. She was bullied through middle school and then on into high school, and she eventually committed suicide. And I show a video about her as well, and kind of her experience that she had, and ultimately it led to her committing suicide. But her family put this video together to kind of memorialize and make it aware what was going on. And then last, I talk about bystanders, that they can be the problem, part of the problem, or they can be the solution to the problem. And I let them think about, you know, I could stand by and let this go on and not say anything at all, or I could do something about it and help that person. So, I raise that awareness. I also let them think about, are you a bully? I give them some questions to ask themselves, you know, are you an actual bully? And then I give them some solutions as to how they can stop being a bully. This program's available now. We are slated to present it at McCracken County High School, starting the week of November 18th, and I will be presenting along with Officer Kelly Drew that entire week in several different classes. And so, I hope that this gets the word out that it is available, and the other high schools and middle schools will pick it up and call us to come and present.
One of the things we talked about in some of our task force meetings is that the schools really do seem to have a good programs going. We had the high school principals here, Michael Seglinsky and Art Davis, and they really have some good programs for the bullying at the school, but the problem is when the child leaves school and they go home, and some things happen there, the school has no control over that, of course. And I don't know if you all ever get calls? And we talked about, is there any way we can do, like a call line, if someone's being bullied after they leave school for help, if they need help?
Very good points, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity for us to present this tonight. Your questions are questions that are valid. We've discussed those with the school officials so far. We've kicked it around in our internal committee to see what avenue that we could probably best address that issue in conjunction with the school systems. We have a great open line of communication with the school. We work great with them on both schools, city schools and county schools, and this is one of the programs we felt like we could get up running the easiest. I want to commend Officer Morgan, Officer Dillon, Officer Drew, Captain Hodgson, that are in charge of this program, about getting this up, and not only getting this program up and going, it's presented in the right format. You know, a lot of the kids could be turned off to this subject very easily and very quickly, but they address those issues and get their attention in some very good illustrations that they present. So, we enjoy working on this. It's something that we realize is a problem, and bullying in its simplest form may not be a crime, but we realize how that can compound some issues and become a crime later. So, we want to try to get in front of it in the very beginning. So, thank you.
I think because that bell rings at 2:20 and students leave, that environment of school, the niche that I noticed in your presentation is that you have that conversation, that dialogue to see, am I just... I thought I was just joking around, you know? I didn't realize that that was, I was actually bullying that kid, and some individuals will recognize that and pump the brakes on that type of activity. So, until we get some other things going, when that 2:20 bell rings, you know, hopefully what... This is just another tool to help maybe some self-recognition to curb that behavior. So, I applaud that. That's a good insight.
Thank you. You know, we need to educate. You know, like you said, people may not know that they're actually being a bully, and so education is kind of the first step to resolving these issues.
And I think it's a great way for the Police Department to reach out to children, and, you know, it shows the Police Department is... It's showing a positive role model for those young kids, and it's building that relationship with our community through our children and the Police Department. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please, for the minutes. Oh, are there any additions or deletions first? I'm sorry.
We do have a resolution that's been added to rename Dolly McNutt Plaza to Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for October 22nd, 2013, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, we'll go on to motions. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Insurance certificate for Danny Copensun's excavating deed for 517 North Fifth Street, Gary Jackson. Contracts and agreements. Convention Center Corporation contract for services. Executed expanded jurisdiction agreement with the Department of Housing, Buildings, and Construction. Grant agreement amendment for Jackson House Elevator Rehabilitation Project Extension for project completion date. Riverfront Development Project Phase 1A piles and mass fill change order number two. Real estate closing documents for the purchase of the property located at 565 Concord Avenue. Pre-closing documents. Sales and purchasing contract with addendum and map attached. Ordinance number 2013-10-8088. Notice of adoption and summary of ordinance. Closing documents. Settlement statement HUD 1. Deed of conveyance and permanent public utility and easement original. Tax agreement. Buyer's closing certification and copy of check. Title documents. The title examination letter. Post-closing documents. Partial deed of release from JSA and release of less pendants. Luther F. Carson Forever Center financial statements for years ended June 30th, 2013 and 2012. City of Paducah Police and Firefighters Pension Fund valuation summary for year ended July 1, 2013. Paducah Water Works Financial Highlights for September 2013. Barclay Regional Airport Authority Financial Statements years ended June 30th, 2013 and 2012.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, resolution to rename Dolly McNutt Plaza to Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza. And I would like to say that we're honored to help with this tonight, and I know I've talked with Dr. Gordon, I think he came in, hi, on several occasions, as well as a couple of other veterans during some of the Veterans Day celebrations that we had and memorials that we attended. And I think this is, you know, the plaza has developed into honoring our veterans, and I think this is very appropriate. It does not take away from our very great first female mayor, Dolly McNutt. Her name will still be there. The historic marker will still be there in her honor. It's still her plaza, but we will add this additional portion to it to honor our veterans. So, I will read that now. Whereas in August of this year, Dr. Gordon Williams of the Vietnam Veterans of America approached Mayor Kayler regarding adjusting the name of Dolly McNutt Plaza to Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza, since there are three major memorials in the park. And whereas the memorials recognize local veterans who served in World War II, the Korean War, and the Vietnam War. And whereas the city has received a request for amending the name of Dolly McNutt Plaza from American Legion Post 31, VFW Post 12022, Daughters of the American Veterans Chapter VII and VVA Chapter 337, supporting Dr. Williams' proposal. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Section 1, that the City of Paducah hereby renames Dolly McNutt Plaza to be known as Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect upon adoption as provided by law.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from Commissioner Wilson?
Well, I think it's appropriate, and so, it's a good thing.
Dr. Gordon Williams, would you like to come up and say anything? And I'd like for all the other veterans that are here tonight, that if you'll come up and stand with him.
Yes, Mark.
So, these are our Vietnam veterans here tonight.
Yes, Ms. Mayor and members of the City Commission, we're very proud to be a part of hopefully renaming Dolly McNutt Plaza, tweaking the name to Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza. We've been talking over the years, the Vietnam Vet's Memorial was put in place in 1984, and so it's been there for a long time. And more recently, the Korean veterans put their monument in place, and then the World War II veterans. We understand that there are also initial talks about possibly using the Fourth Quadrant for a memorial for the Middle East veterans in the current conflict. So, as we talked about it, knowing who Dolly McNutt was, she was such a wonderful public servant, and the fact that all of these memorials are in place, we thought slightly tweaking the name to Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza would probably be a fitting honor, not only for her, but also for all of those who have served in these various conflicts. And calling it McNut... Dolly McNutt Memorial Plaza would leave open the possibility of other monuments for other groups who are not necessarily military, the wonderful people who protect us on the streets here in Paducah each day, and the Paducah Police Department, McCracken County people, the fire department, first responders, and other people that the committee might eventually want to honor with memorials down there. And you've known Dolly for years, and you felt like Dolly would be... This would be very fitting, and she would be supportive of the...
She would.
So, that's why we've come before the commission to make this recommendation. Next Monday is the Veterans Day Parade, and we thought that would be very fitting at this time of the year for you all to consider this issue as a prelude to the parade next Monday. So, we would ask you all to further consider and hopefully approve this tweaking of the name, which we feel it's a small change, but we think it's an important change that everybody will appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mark, do you have anything to say? I know we had talked about maybe before the Veterans Day Parade is having a little dedication.
Yes, Mayor, we're looking at probably at 9:00 on Monday morning to have a rededication, brief ceremony there right before, and then everybody can head downtown to the parade and be ready for that.
So, just everyone show up at 9:00?
9:00.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, we'll go on to municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Hi, Cindy.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have personnel actions for your approval. I was privileged to sit in on the promotion team for the fire department, so you see several promotions there. It's a well-defined and orchestrated process that I would like to commend Chief Kyle for his work and thought in that. Had some good, excellent interviews and candidates through that process, so pleased to recommend these.
Thank you. Any questions? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please. No, no, sorry, Commissioner Wilson.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield as the city's third-party administrator to provide claims administrative services related to the city's health insurance plan. The effective date of this agreement is January 1, 2014, and ending December 31, 2014.
Second.
Okay, we've talked about this last week, so any other discussion on this? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the rates for stop-loss insurance coverage with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield for the group health insurance plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the 2013 calendar year, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah insurance coverage for the group health insurance plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky, effective January 1, 2014, the stop-loss rates are as follows. Individual stop-loss, $175,000 maximum city liability per person, with a monthly cost of $92.98 per member, and aggregate stop-loss, 3,300... Excuse me. 3,391,000. That would've been nice, wouldn't it? And 4 cents maximum city liability of total claims combined with a monthly cost of $6.29 per member. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield for the stop-loss coverage.
Second. Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance abolishing Chapter 6 alcoholic beverages and establishing a new Chapter 6 alcoholic beverages of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance abolishes Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.1 through Section 6.9, and Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6.31 through Section 6.40, and establishes a new Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6.1 through Section 6.9, and Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 6.31 through Section 6.43, which is known as the Alcoholic Beverages Control Chapter of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. The purpose of this ordinance is to bring the City of Paducah's alcoholic beverage ordinance into conformity with new revisions to Kentucky's alcoholic beverage statutes, KRS Chapter 241 through KRS Chapter 244. Further, this ordinance establishes penalties for failing to renew licenses within the time prescribed by the notice given by the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control pursuant to KRS 243.090. These penalties and/or fines are published as follows in accordance with Kentucky revised statutes. Section 637 Renewal. A, renewal license shall be issued under this chapter in the same manner as original licenses, see Section 6-33, with respect as to application therefor standards for same and execution of the required bond. B, penalties. One, any licensee who fails to file for renewal or pay the license fees on or before the time prescribed in the notice to renew from the State's Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control shall be subject to a penalty in amount equal to 5% of the license taxes due for each calendar month or fraction thereof. Provided however, the total penalty levied pursuant to this subsection shall not exceed 25% of the total license fees due, nor shall it be less than $25. Two, in addition to the penalty described above, the licensee shall also pay as part of the license fees an amount equal to 12% simple interest on any unpaid license fees which are due until the license fees are finally paid to the city. A fraction of a month is counted as an entire month. Three, every license fee imposed under this article, together with any penalties and interest which are assessed in relation thereto, shall become a personal debt of the person who is liable for same as defined under this article, from and after the date that the license fees were to be paid to the city. The city shall have the right to enforce the collection of the license fees and all related penalties and interests by civil action in court of competent jurisdiction. To the extent authorized by law, the city shall be entitled to recover all court costs and reasonable attorney fees incurred by it in enforcing any provision of this article.
Second.
Okay.
I have a question on this.
Sure. Sure.
I know that this is bringing us part of our codes up to changes that were recently made. Were there other changes that were made during that that we should possibly consider that other cities are doing? And one in particular was, I think they lifted the part about you can no longer sell alcohol on Election Day. That's no longer prohibited by the state.
Yeah, that was a prohibition that was part of state statute that effectively did not give the cities the ability to allow that. That has been done away with in the collective judgment of several of us. We neglected to bring that change forward to you and would suggest that if that's something that you're interested in, that we go ahead and proceed to pass this ordinance revision tonight and consider that in a subsequent amendment to the ordinance if that's your wishes.
Is that something that, are you aware of what other communities around us may be doing or?
I've not received any feedback, Tammy.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Well, the reason I ask, I mean, I have received emails asking us if we would consider it as a city now that it is legal for those stores that sell alcohol to be open on Election Day, if we would consider it as well. So I mean, I'm not asking to put it into this one, but I would ask for you to do some research and see if that's something that we would be interested in as well.
What's, and this may be an obvious answer, but what was the origin of that?
I think what it's, if I could be so bold, I might call it a blue law. It's been on the books forever in Kentucky. I'm not aware of very many other instances in the country where that's.
People getting intoxicated, going and pulling the courage.
I'm not saying that.
I think it's buying votes.
No, I mean.
Buying votes with alcohol is what originally started.
I mean, it was like way before we were back even born, wasn't it? I mean.
Well, I'm sure it was. I was just interested to see, you know, what the thinking was when they put that on the books.
I think it's been lifted in most places where it was put on the books. Kentucky's probably one of the last to consider doing that.
And is it still relevant? So apparently, apparently not.
I mean, we don't have Election Day coming up right away in Kentucky, but I think that's something that if you all would look into that and see what other communities are doing.
City Manager can do that for us? All right. See, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Okay, we're not voting on alcohol.
No, we're voting on.
We're voting on state. Yes, that was just aside.
I know, I'm just. Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Kayler?
Yeah, aye. Okay, City Managers' Report.
Briefly, Paducah Riverfront Development Authority meets tomorrow. It'll be their second meeting in the process of reviewing the riverfront development plan. The first meeting, I think, was very good, very robust. And there's every anticipation that that level of dedication to the task will continue. I know staff has been preparing some information and preparing some responsive to some questions that have come forward from members of the authority since it last met. So a good information exchange is underway. Would ask for an executive session for economic development.
Okay, we have Mayor and Commissioner comments? Anything tonight? Okay, well, I just have to tell everybody that Saturday is going to be so much fun at the Railroad Museum because I'm having the Mayor's Book Club Read at the Railroad Museum. And it's called "Oni, the Mail Pouch Pooch." And this was a real dog. This is about the story, the life of a real dog who was a mutt and came into the Albany Postal Department skinny, freezing to death, and they adopted the dog as their mascot. And he loved the mail pouches so much that he jumped off of a mail wagon one day because a pouch of mail fell off and he sat on top of it until they came back to pick it up to protect the mail. Oni not only was a mascot for the Albany Postal Department, but he traveled all over the country. He would jump on trains and ride with the mail on the trains. He even traveled to Europe. And he would get tags for his collar everywhere he went. And his collar became so heavy that they made a special harness for him to wear that had all of his medals on it. So I'm thrilled to read this story to the kids because I think it's such a cool story. And he's, he was actually taxidermied and he's in the Smithsonian Institute. So we're not, we're not only going to have a great story, but they do fun projects with the kids there at the Railroad Museum. And we're going to have the McCracken County Animal Shelter and Humane Society there with Dog Adoption Day. And hopefully, we'll get a postal truck so the kids can see the postal truck and get inside and see some of the empty mailbags.
What time is that?
It starts at 11. There's three reads. So if any of the commissioners could stop by there, that'd be great, too.
The Railroad Museum is right behind the Commerce Center at South Third in Washington.
Right.
It's great.
Anything else going on in Paducah right now? There was so much going on last week, I'm not sure. All right. So we won't be making any decisions after the executive session, coming back to take action. So meeting's adjourned.
Oh, we need to.
I gotta read this.
Executive session.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm.
Commissioner Abraham.
Okay, I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic. A specific proposal by a business entity where a public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second. City Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Sorry, I got so caught up in Oni that, are there any public comments tonight? Okay.
Could I add in that we are collecting information from community citizens about what they would like for our community to see as priorities for the 2014 General Assembly Legislature that we would take to them related to capital projects or any kind of transportation infrastructure. It's five quick, easy, simple questions. You can go to epaduca.com to complete a survey or paducachamber.org to complete a survey about things that you would want to see in the community.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Meeting is adjourned.